...intend regular meeting of the Parkway Board of Education. If you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mrs. Castillo?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Here.
Dr. Sieratino? Mr. Major?
Here. Special recognitions this evening. This evening, the Board of Education is recognizing an outstanding group of Parkway students. We are honoring students who have demonstrated outstanding academic achievement in the National Merit Scholarship Program as well as six students from the STARS programs, Students and Teachers as Research Scientists. First, I'd like to invite Desi Kirchhafer, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, to begin the recognition of our National Merit students.
Thank you, President Major, and Board members, and Dr. Centi, Secretary Klenda. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize Parkway's finest students. Forty-six Parkway students have been recognized by National Merit Scholarship Corporation. It's a organization that conducts competitions for recognition and college undergraduate scholarships through two programs, the National Merit Scholarship Program and the National Achievement Scholarship Program. More than 1.5 million juniors in over 22,000 high schools entered the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which serves as an initial screener for program entrance. 16,000 students represent less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors qualified for National Merit semifinalists. Twenty-one Parkway students earn National Merit semifinalist status, and an additional 21 students are recognized as commended. Four Parkway students have been selected as semifinalists in the National Achievement Scholarship Program. While Parkway student enrollment is about 2% of total number of students in Missouri, Parkway National Merit semifinalists comprise more than 7% of those in the state. Students have an opportunity to continue the program, to qualify for nearly 8,400 Merit Scholarship Awards worth $36 million that will be offered next spring. Some students were unable to join us this evening. Please refer to your program for a complete list of students who should be congratulated for their accomplishments. Now, please join me in welcoming Tim Gannon, Principal of Central High, who will recognize his students.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm very pleased to lead this parade of outstanding student achievement this evening. Central High is very pleased of its remarkable academic reputation and history. I'd like to introduce our National Merit semifinalists first, and I ask that we hold our applause until all students have been introduced, and then we'll get... Representing Central High as a National Merit semifinalist, Henry Cow, who I don't believe is here, Jonathan Daniels. I'm 0-for-2. Oh, there he is. All right, back in the running. Anupam Devkota. You'll tell me. Linda Do. Allison McGruder, I know she's here. Alexander Maslov, and I know he's here. I'd also like to introduce our commended National Merit students, Joseph Dardick and Caitlin Strutz. I know she's here. And I would also like to extend an invitation to the parents of these students to please stand up because we know they couldn't have achieved this accomplishment without your support. Parkway Central's National Merit semifinalists and commended students. I would like to introduce Dr. Jenny Markhart, Principal of North High School.
Good evening, everyone, and it is my pleasure to announce the North High National Merit Scholars, and I want to congratulate all of these young people and just remind them about how important it is, about the role modeling that they have done in their classrooms for academic achievement. It is truly outstanding. First off, semifinalists Benjamin Burson, Christopher Cammy, Honored in the National Achievement Scholarship Program is Remy Belogan, who is not with us this evening. And our commended students, Abigail Barrow. It's okay, you can applaud. Amelia Chen. I don't think she's here. David Goldfeld, I don't believe is here. Graham Kruger, who is not able to be with us, and Timothy Noonan, and finally, Zachary And as well, I would like to acknowledge all of the support from the parents, so if at this time you could please stand, all of the parents of the National Merit Scholars from North High. Congratulations to all of you. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Paula Hopkins, an Assistant Principal at Parkway South High, to announce the South High Scholars.
Thank you, and I am very grateful for the opportunity to be here this evening to introduce the students from South High. Our first group of South High semifinalists are Ryan Egan, Megan Scallan, who is unable to be... No, he is not able to be here. Our South High commended students, Retom Bera, Mona Dai, they are not able to be here. Bradley Tucker, who is unable to be here. But we also have with us Hema Veramachanini South High is also very fortunate to have two students who qualified for the National Achievement Scholarship Program, and they are Jennifer Mahon and we also have Iber Prosper, who is over here. Come on over. And at this time, I would also like to recognize our parents who are here with us this evening. If they would please stand. Now, please welcome Dr. Jeremy Mitchell, Principal from West High.
Thank you, Paula. I would like to congratulate all the preceding individuals and those who will soon follow, a little closer to home here at West High. Our West High semifinalists are as follows. Megan Arnell. Our West High commended students are Kyle Bailey, Carrie Shea, and Clayton Vance. West High is also proud of our National Achievement Scholarship Program winner, Dylan And don't worry, family members, I want you to stand up for us, too. You are the secret behind the successes you see here. So, family members. I'll now bring Mr. Kirchhafer back to the podium.
Congratulations once again, students and parents of the students. It's quite a proud honor. Next, I want to introduce some folks who work with the STARS Program, and for those of you who don't know, the STARS Program is an acronym for Students, Teachers as Research Scientists, and it's an excellent program that we're glad to have a partnership with. So, please join me in welcoming Ron Sax, President and CEO of LMI Aerospace, and Sarah Jamison, Corporate HR Manager with LMI Aerospace. Mr. Sax, Ms. Jamison, will present the winners of the Award for Excellence in Research in the STARS Program. Please welcome.
No disrespect to the board, but I'm going to make a few comments that are directed Both Sarah and Aerospace, a company that's based here in St. Louis, and we do engineering and manufacturing of aerospace and defense products. We got involved in the STARS Program four or five years ago, and I'm reminded because as I look at the students who are here about to embark on their college careers. We originally got introduced to the STARS Program by a Dr. Ken Mayers, who couldn't be with us tonight. Kenny, as I know him, was a high school friend, and we were about to celebrate our 50th high school reunion, and we had not hooked up for a number of years until Kenny became aware of our interest in supporting education, and so we became a sponsor of the STARS Program, and we've been very happy with it over the years. In 1999, the STARS Program enables outstanding, rising junior or senior students who show significant promise in science to attend an area research institution for six weeks. This year, 63 high school juniors and seniors representing 28 different high schools participated. Academically, the participants were in a very select group. These students conduct research with outstanding faculty in a one-to-one environment. Classes and research are conducted using the facilities of the Donald Danforth Plant Science Center, St. Louis College of Pharmacy, St. Louis University, Soleil, Washington University, and the Host Institution, which is University of Missouri at St. Louis. To complete the program, each student must present a scholarly paper based on their research findings. Now, I get copies of all of these papers, and I must tell you, I stand for even the titles, much less getting into them. But we do have engineers, we have an engineering group that is based in San Diego, and over the last few years, they've been grading some of the papers and determining who the recipients will be of the awards. Over the summer, 10 Parkway high school students participated in the program. That's a very large percentage. I heard you say you had a large percentage of Missouri students winning awards. We're very pleased with the participation from this program, and I'm sure it's in no small part due to the teachers in the program, the mentoring that they do, and getting these students interested in this type of program. I mentioned we're in aerospace and defense. We're in an industry that can only thrive if we get students who are educated in the sciences, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And that program, the STEM program, is now... A good deal by the Obama Administration, and for those of you who watch that kind of thing, you'll see a number of advertisements, including a group that Sarah has gotten closely involved with called Change the Equation, to try to interest more and more students in this type of work. So, we appreciate your willingness to have your children and their classmates participate in the program. All of the students were commended 2010 STARS Research Scholars at our confirmation ceremony July the 16th. I'd like to recognize four of the students, Calvin Irwin, Sean Kuo, Bob Song, and Stephanie Zhang at this time. Congratulations to them on this accomplishment. Before making our presentation to six of your students, I'll describe the process a little bit. All 63 researched... Depending on the student's area of study. All papers were reviewed and judged anonymously using the following criteria: difficulty and complexity of the research, appropriateness of the research methodology, findings, quality of writing, and overall quality of the research process. This evening, it's with great pride and pleasure, I present the LMID III Technologies Awards for Excellence in Research. The award certificate which Sarah will be handing out reads, "Students and Teachers as Research Scientists." In recognition of outstanding research accomplishments during the STARS Program, LMID III Technologies presents the award for excellence to the following students. And I'll call each of them up to receive their awards. Feel free to clap for them whenever you'd like. The first is Duchant, and excuse me... Hema Veramashani. This award that each of the students received is signed by the Senior Officer of each of the participating institutions and by myself. Congratulations, and put very succinctly, this group is the best of the best. I'd like to also congratulate the faculty counselors and administration of the Parkway School District for the outstanding academic programs that provide the quality background that help students to win very competitive research awards. You know, it's unique. STARS is a program that may be copied and reused, but we're particularly blessed by having them in the local area, so I hope that more and more of your students will want to participate in the program going forward. We look forward certainly to your participation next year of those schools that I've visited. Yours has the largest participation of any, so thank you very much.
It's incredibly rewarding to be up here for an event like this. And thank you very much to all the families. We know the hard work and the dedication that's gone into getting to a point like this, so thank you very much, and we certainly enjoy recognizing y'all, too. You have outstanding children, and you should be honored to have you all here tonight, and while we love a captive audience for our board meetings, at this time, we will take a brief break, and feel free to depart if you have more pressing issues this evening. So, thank you very much.[1496.33] 9.01 Update on the Superintendent Search Process. We did have a meeting last week. They all seemed to run together, but we did finalize the process. And as previously mentioned, we are using a closed search, which the intent is to not have candidates have to disclose to perhaps their current employer that they're seeking employment elsewhere. And hopefully that brings us the candidates. But we do intend to use a process which allows our community members, staff, and administrators an opportunity to participate in the process. So, there will be votes. And those committees will function on a confidential basis and will in fact interview the final three candidates coming up mid-December is our current timeline for that. And I was hoping to announce who was going to be on those committees, but I think the invitations are not finalized yet. So, that information will be posted on the website within the week, Mrs. Calanda?
As soon as... Yes.
Okay. Within a week or so. And let's see, any other updates will be available on the website under the Superintendent Search button. And also, there will be an election come April, so I'd like to announce that the board filings will open Tuesday, December 14th at 8:00 a.m., 0800. At the Admin Building. And then the last data file is Tuesday, January 18th at 5:00 p.m. And this year, three seats will be up, Mrs. Moggerman's, Mr. Jacobs', and mine. 9.02 Calendar Meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, December 8th, 2010, at Central Middle School, starting at 7:30 p.m.
Well, we attended the MSBA Conference in Lake of the Ozarks, most of us, about two weekends ago. We spent the entire weekend there, going from seminar to seminar. And I think we all learned so much that our heads were ready to explode when we got back, but I think all in all, a good time was had by all and we learned a lot of good stuff that hopefully will help us going forward this year.
I learned so much that my hair hurt.
I was really busy. Help me out here.
Ouch.
And to follow up, I want to point out that Eric Leeters of our school district did a presentation on greening schools, which was very interesting, along with somebody from the U.S. Rebuilding Council. That was both very informative and entertaining, too.
Great. Anything else, Mr. Jacobs?
I did attend this last Wednesday. Some students, I found out at Parkway West, decided to have a little teacher appreciation. And I just found out about it, so I thought I would just drop by. It was at a local church in the area over there, and so I got to meet many of the teachers. Most of them asked me how they could get a raise, and I pointed them to their PNEA, a person who was there. But the neat thing is, it was put on by the students. They organized it. They invited a teacher that had meant a great deal to them, either in the middle school or high school. And it was very engaging and very important about their teachers. And it was, you know, really quite a nice evening to see how they felt about the education they were getting and some of the teachers that had really influenced them. One girl had prepared a poem. I wish I had it with me. It was funny, but it was really quite interesting. So, I think our kids are in some pretty good hands, and it was evidenced that night. There was a good meal, too.
I just want to elaborate with some statistics from attending the MSBA Conference. Advertisers say that it takes showing an ad seven times before the point gets across. So, when you watch TV, if you see an ad, you're going to have to look at it seven times supposedly before you get the idea. Another one, the attention span of the average adult. And as we heard tonight, which doesn't apply to Parkway, because we're above average.
That long.
And the number seven comes up again, as we heard tonight with the National Merit Finalists. We have 7%, so 7% seems to be a going number these days. Forty percent of students in this country live in poverty. One out of nine students is an immigrant. And of the 290 million people in the United States, 43 million students are mobile. They move every year. And one of the other workshops had to do with search and seizure. And this is regarding comments made on a computer by students as well as employees. Case law has yet to be implemented, so they do not have a basis yet on which to prosecute. And anyone else that attended, if you gave the wrong information, let me know. I tried to copy down as much as I could. A student can be disciplined if comments disrupt a classroom and interferes with the rights of others. And if comments are made off-campus, it has to be a threat in order to be followed up with. And regarding employees on search and seizure, if an employee posts comments while acting in official capacity, then the employee can be disciplined. If a teacher posts insults, let's say, this is an example about other teachers off-campus, then that is considered private. And in both these cases, the First Amendment rights come into play. So, they're basing all this on the First Amendment. And another workshop on seclusion and restraint. Thirty-one states have laws on the books, including Missouri, and the conclusion on physical restraint and sedative. And districts will be required to have a policy in place by July 2011. And then I attended, moving from that, I attended a Safety Network meeting about a week ago, and just a few things. We have 174 block homes and more are needed. And we're also adding to some of the emergency kits in the schools, and we are going to apportion, our defibrillators are going to be apportioned throughout the schools. And on October 28th, moving on, I had the pleasure of welcoming our Parkway families and friends to the all-district Secondary Choir at the Two Hill Performing Arts Center. And I want to thank, on behalf of all of us here, Sandy Collins and her fine arts staff, talented staff as it is, and of course, all the talented students that participated. The finale at the Two Hill was... All of the hard work that was put in by not only the staff, but the students to produce not only the whole concert, but that finale, had a few of us in tears. Kathy Blackmore and me and a few others, yes. So, it was another magnificent performance put on by our students. That's it.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yeah, just to follow up with my comment about Eric Leeters and the greening schools, I want to point out that there's a challenge going on right now online that Parkway North is participating in, and they're ranked like 10th. They're shooting for a grant of a quarter million dollars. It has to do with solar panels. It's a very interesting thing that they're going for, and so I want to put a plug out.
Go to www...
Refresh Everything.
... dot refresh everything dot com. It's a...
Very important distinctions, and I'd like to recognize some of those today. So with that, Dr. Sinti for your in-flight service. I have peanuts, pretzels, a beverage, and a hot towel because, you know, they just live different than the rest of us service savers.
Thank you for your service, sir.
All right, moving on, 9.0 communications. 9.01, update on the superintendent's search process. We did have a meeting last week. They all seemed to run together, but we did finalize the process. And as previously mentioned, we are using a closed search, which the intent is to not have candidates have to disclose to perhaps their current employer that they're seeking employment elsewhere. And hopefully that brings us the candidate. But we do intend to use a process which allows our community members, staff, and administrators an opportunity to participate in the process. So there will be and those committees will function on a confidential basis and will, in fact, interview the final three candidates coming up mid-December is our current timeline for that. And I was hoping to announce who was going to be on those committees, but I think the invitations are not finalized yet. So that information will be posted on the website within the week. Mrs. Calanda?
As soon as, yes.
Okay, within a week or so. And let's see, any other updates will be available on the website under the superintendent's search button. And also, there will be an election come April. So I'd like to announce that the board filings will open Tuesday, December 14th, at 8:00 a.m. at the admin building. And then the last data file is Tuesday, January 18th, at 5:00 p.m. And this year, three seats will be up. Mrs. Mogulman's, Mr. Jacobs', and mine. 9.02, calendar meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, December 8th, 2010, at Central Middle School, starting at 7:30 p.m. 9.03, liaison reports. Ms. Feldman?
Well, we attended the MSBA conference in Lake of the Ozarks, most of us, about two weekends ago. We spent the entire weekend there, going from seminar to seminar. And I think we all learned so much that our heads were ready to explode when we got back, but I think all in all, a good time was had by all, and we learned a lot of good stuff that hopefully will help us going forward this year.
I learned so much that my hair hurt. That was really busy. Help me out here.
Ouch.
And to follow up, I want to point out that Eric Leeters of our school district did a presentation on greening schools, which was very interesting, along with somebody from the U.S. Reimbuilding Council. It was both very informative and entertaining, too.
Great. Anything else, Mr. Jacob?
I did attend this last Wednesday. Some students, I found out at Parkway West, decided to have a little teacher appreciation. And I just found out about it, so I thought I would just drop by. It was at a local church in the area over there, and so I got to meet many of the teachers. Most of them asked me how they could get a raise, and I pointed them to their PNEA, the person who was there. But the neat thing is, it was put on by the students. They organized it. They invited a teacher that had meant a great deal to them, either in the middle school or high school. And it was very engaging and very about their teachers. And it was, you know, really quite a nice evening to see how they felt about the education they were getting and some of the teachers that had really influenced them. One girl had prepared a poem. I wish I had it with me. It was funny, but it was really quite interesting. So I think our kids are in some pretty good hands, and it was evidenced that night. There was a good meal, too.
I just want to elaborate with some statistics from attending the MSBA conference. Advertisers say that it takes showing an ad seven times before the point gets across. So when you watch TV, if you see an ad, you're going to have to look at it seven times supposedly before you get the idea. Another one, the attention span of the average adult and as we heard tonight, which doesn't apply to Parkway because we're above average.
That long.
And the number seven comes up again, as we heard tonight with the National Merit finalists. We have 7%, so 7% seems to be a going number these days. Forty percent of students in this country live in poverty. One out of nine students is an immigrant. And of the 290 million people in the United States, 43 million students are mobile. They move every year. And one of the other workshops had to do with search and seizure. And this is regarding comments made on a computer by students as well as employees. Case law has yet to be implemented, so they do not have a basis yet on which to prosecute. And anyone else that attended give the wrong information, let me know. I tried to copy down as much as I could. A student can be disciplined if comments disrupt a classroom and interferes with the rights of others. And if comments are made off-campus, it has to be a threat in order to be followed up with. And regarding employees on search and seizure, if an employee posts comments while acting in official capacity, then the employee can be disciplined. If a teacher posts insults, let's say, this is an example, about other teachers off-campus, then that is considered private. And in both these cases, the First Amendment rights come into play. So they're basing all this on the First Amendment. And another workshop on seclusion and restraint. Thirty-one states have laws on the books, including Missouri, and the conclusion on physical restraint and and districts will be required to have a policy in place by July 2011. And then I attended, moving from that, I attended a safety network meeting about a week ago and just a few things. We have 174 block homes and more are needed. And we're also adding to some of the emergency kits in the schools, and we are going to apportion, our defibrillators are going to be apportioned throughout the schools. And on October 28th, moving on, I had the pleasure of welcoming our Parkway families and friends to the all-district Secondary Choir at the Two-Hill Performing Arts Center. And I want to thank, on behalf of all of us here, Sandy Collins and her fine arts staff, talented staff as it is, and of course, all the talented students that participated. The finale at the Two-Hill was all of the hard work that was put in by not only the staff but the students to produce not only the whole concert but that finale had a few of us in tears. Kathy Blackmore and me and a few others, yes. So it was another magnificent performance put on by our students. That's it.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yeah, just to follow up with my comment about Eric Leeters and the greening schools, I want to point out that there's a challenge going on right now online that Parkway North is participating in, and they're ranked like 10th. They're shooting for a grant of a quarter million dollars. It has to do with solar panels. It's a very interesting thing that they're going for, and so I want to put a plug out.
Go to www.
Refresh Everything.
dot refresh everything dot com. It's a Pepsi
And then search on that. I've been really out there pushing that. And one other thing
You can vote once a day for every email address you have. So do it.
Vote early, vote often.
Yes.
You can vote by text.
You can vote by Facebook page, too.
So I think that's great. It's really generating some excitement. And I did try to make the Special Olympics soccer tournament over here at Parkway Central, but I was stuck in a trial, and I got there at the very end. And I know that Dee, did you make that?
No.
So I tried, but I got there at the very end to offer my support, so.
Okay.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
I'll go ahead and do mine.
Sure, I'm sorry.
You said you wanted to add a word. Let's see, as the rest of the board was frolicking at the lake, I was here, participating in the Project Parkway Town Hall meeting. And we did have a good number of students in the room, and I, as always, am almost taken aback but absolutely encouraged by the fact that we are continually challenged to provide more rigor at any time that we are talking to middle school and high school students. The demand is for more, 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 so we will continue to work on more, more, more. But I think Project Parkway appears to me to be full steam ahead, and I absolutely approve of that and looking forward to some of the outcomes in the very near future. And then last Saturday, my Oakbrook and I went and saw the eighth-grade Junior Patriots football team, who were playing the Fort Zumwalt West purple-clad threat in their championship game. And pleased to report that the Junior Patriots, scoring on the second play of the game and kicking the extra point for two points, made that hold up, and they won the game eight to six. So it was quite the defensive struggle. But congratulations to them and look forward to South High in the next couple of years as the seventh, eighth, and freshman teams are all looking very strong down there. With that, Mrs. Mogulman?
President Major, I need to take issue with something that you said. None of us frolicked. I don't know why you think we did, but we didn't frolic.
Well, I always frolic. When I go down there, it's
Which is why I didn't go this year. There were a couple of themes that I kept seeing reoccurring at the conference. One, all of the sessions that had to do with school finance and rifting people and that sort of thing were packed. There are so many districts worried about their current financial situation, and we are so blessed that we're not one of them. We're doing really well, and let's keep it that way. But those seminars were packed with people from all over the state. Secondly, this open enrollment issue with the Turner case was, there was a lot of talk generated about that. We still don't know what's going to happen with that, but we're all nervous and anxious to find a resolution for that. So hopefully, I think the consensus is kind of, we need to work with our legislators to get a solution that is realistic and that schools can work with. So hopefully, we can get that accomplished this year before we have to deal with open-ended open enrollment. So those were kind of the two main things I kept seeing pop up over the weekend. Today, along with many people in this room, we spent the day at a Project Parkway Steering Committee meeting. And today was the day the task force leaders gave a synopsis of their task force reports. And it was a very interesting day, learned a lot, heard some things I was surprised to hear, some things I kind of expected. But I think the consensus was, this is a big picture. These changes are a big picture, and we have a lot of little puzzle pieces to put together to get the big picture to work. And first day we met with Grant Wiggins, this is, I think, that's where we are right now. It's messy. And there are three of the task force reports that it kind of became clear to us today, they can't work independently. They need to work together to come to a big-picture solution. And that's the full-day kindergarten, the length of the school day and start and end times, and the school enrollment and boundaries. And there was also an issue with future topics of study that I think kind of went in there. So, Mr. President, if you'll give me the privilege of inviting Mr. Desi Kershaw up, he's going to kind of go over what was discussed today and to inform the board and to let you know what the steering committee thought would be the best way to approach this.
Absolutely. I think you did a very nice job of kind of synthesizing.
And let me tell you, he learned he was going to do this about 1:00 today or noon today. And he was in that meeting to
No animated PowerPoint slides?
No.
Well, actually, you'd be surprised, because you pull up. No. The, Ms. Mogulman, you did an excellent job of really putting together what did happen today. But I think what we had going on is some very intense work for a short period of time to make some recommendations or gather more data to draw some conclusions from. And as these tracks kind of ran parallel, we found out today, they really weren't running parallel. Some of them were running this way. And so we had some minor collisions today, but, or maybe we should say connections. It might be a better word. I think you said puzzle pieces. So I think what we have here out of Project Parkway is a Parkway puzzle to put together. And in doing so, we were contemplating bringing together the groups that had done some work on there, at least the leaders of the group, and then kind of forming a power task force almost to gather some information with regards to the full-day start and end times. One of the future topics of study, and you'll hear more about through program, or later on in a program evaluation, that we had a preliminary discussion on, was also early childhood. So how all those kind of puzzle pieces may fit together in a large scope scheme. So I'll give you an example of one of the parallel things going on that kind of ran into each other today. As the study increased in intensity for full-day kindergarten, and there was a deeper, deeper analysis of space for kindergarten purposes, we're hearing that out of the north area there may be a possibility that indeed, for one more year, they could house their kindergarten students for next year. So that was new news to the entire task force and one that had been working on north-area enrollment issues. So we needed to take a step back and say, well, how can we make this work together? One of the items enrollment boundaries task force was, there was a recommendation based on that, but also based on where to send north-area students or how to refit some things to make it work to accommodate students. But I think the bottom line out of that committee was, we really need a bigger-picture look and a bigger plan in place. And I think that's what this power task force would like to do, to pull together all those items, pull some key people from facilities, from finance, from transportation, from other district groups, and sit down, look at where the connections are made in those puzzles, start piecing them together to present a bigger concept to the board. Instead of working in isolation like the groups had been, we want to make the connections and be able to present a recommendation for a bigger, broader scope project with all those ideas coming together. So any other comments to add?
Well, this became known So if you hear that, that's what this
The Voltron Task Force was the
Yeah, I don't know. Anyway.
I don't know what the Voltron is exactly, but
I think that Dr. Hudson came up with that. I don't know. Anyway, the thing that kind of surprised us today was, a year or so, a year ago, maybe a little bit less, the board was told there are urgent issues at McKelvey and Craig, and these issues will need to be addressed by next fall. They're not going to have room for their students. Well, I think they're rethinking that a little bit, and what we heard today that is a possibility, if we have a long-term solution for 2012, they can work it out for one more year in their schools and tough it out one more year, rather than do a short-term solution, moving kids for one year. So I think we need to confirm that and work with that, but to me you too, because we were hearing, we need to fix this now.
And I think the good part of that is, though, that there is a fix-it now, if need be. It's on the table, so it can be recognized and acknowledged, the work that group did.
Right, right. So that's kind of how this all started, and
I think it's really important to understand that we're not starting over.
Right, no.
We're using the work of the various task forces, and we're just going to take the leaders of those different groups, as Desi said. And we're not talking another 18 months. We're talking about probably the December or January board meeting for you.
And if we come up with a solid solution for 2012, I think parents will understand why maybe we're waiting to do this. I mean, I think for one year, they can understand this. But if it's five years, that's not going to work.
Right. There are some real exciting challenges that were presented today. We all heard them, but again, I'll emphasize the word wonderful possibilities when the groups come together to present, like I said, a broader scope.
Well, does the steering committee think we need some sort of resolution from the board to form this Voltron?
I think what the plan, the preliminary plan is to, if these people can meet and come up with a tentative plan by December 8th, well, that would give us till January. They would present it at the December 8th meeting, and then at the January meeting, we could approve it possibly.
And we are asking for the board to approve of what Desi and Dee have just told.
Oh, okay.
We don't need a vote, but
No, just a headline. Just a
I think it's okay.
The problem is, they don't have a lot of time, and they're very busy people. Desi said he could do it on Thanksgiving Day. I know all of you
We were thinking about something called gobble docs today. It's going to work through, so.
That's going to be the issue for them. It's a lot of people to get together who are very busy.
But people who have been steep in the process and who have a pretty good knowledge of all the work that's been done.
So it's not starting over with a new person. It's someone who led these task force committees. So that gives them a good leg up, I think.
Well, any comment from other board members?
Way to go, Dee. Way to go, Desi.
And everyone else did great.
Any questions or concerns on that? Thank you, and thou shalt not moodle on Turkey Day. And finally, I think we do have some education students in the room. Is that right? Like to recognize them. Where are you all attending school?
I'm at Umsul.
My wife graduated from Umsul, so always glad to hear that.
There you go.
Well, welcome. I hope you all enjoy the proceedings, and we'll do our best to wrap them up in a timely fashion. All right, any other liaison items? All right, 10.0 action items, consent items, 10.01 through 10.21. May have a motion and a second to approve those items.
So moved.
Are there any questions or items that should be pulled to action or closed?
Mr. President, I would appreciate a little bit of a, I apologize, I didn't have a chance to look into it prior to this meeting, but I would like to get more information about 10.14. I'm just not sure what that is we're buying.
Any other items?
Wes, would or Eena Wes, would you be able to answer that question right now?
We need to pull it to action.
10.14. Okay. We're going to pull 10.14 to action. We'll address that in a minute. Mr. Garten, sorry. And were there any other questions or concerns on those items? Okay, so with the exception of 10.14, all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six oh.
And I think that most of us have a check that we need to abstain from for MSBA travel. Is that on this one? Next one?
I didn't think, because I didn't see it. But
I just assumed. Okay, the next time.
Well, should we have a rolling abstention if there are any checks with names of board members on them? That's noted, Mrs. Mogulman, and the minutes will reflect that if any of those checks are, in fact, on the list of approved transactions this month. So that will move item 10.14 to the first of the action items. So, Mr. Garten?
Yes, sir.
Can you address 10.14, or do you need to
Absolutely. Steve might help me. Go ahead with the question. I'll see if I can help you.
I was curious what that software does, but I didn't see it in the
In the Sure. Let me get particulars for you from Steve. Steve?
Oh, okay. This said Office 2010 purchases, Pixie software for the elementary classrooms, various software bids to support the elementary curriculum and refresh. This is not any of the hardware for the classroom pods or anything like that. It's the normal classroom activities.
It's the, like, from Office, like, we have the elementary refresh. So this is the bid for the software for, you have Pixie that we put on the computer itself, and so they bid it out, you know, in the lowest bid for those particular pieces is who it goes to.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to approve item 10.14?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six oh. Item 10.14 is approved. Now, 11.01, approval of the 2009-2010 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Wes Garten?
Good evening. Good evening, President Major, members of the board, Dr. Sinti and Ms. Calanda. I'm here to introduce Brian Wertz of Kerber Eck and Brackle. He, you know, they are our external auditor, and they're here to submit the annual financial report. Before I hand it over to Brian, I would like to for their continued success in operating the district's money flows. The Finance Department has an eight-year streak with being awarded the Certificate of Excellence from the Association of School Business Officials International. And I want to thank Maureen Dennis, Director of Finance specifically. Her hard work and dedication for that staff is always appreciated. I'd also like to thank Sue Reno. She's not here this evening. She's our accounting manager. Kay Chesser, financial analyst, and Joyce Pezel, my administrative assistant. They've all worked really hard in getting the audit together and put forth so that we can bring it to you tonight. And with that, I'm going to give the podium over to Brian.
We passed out an outline of some things that I'm going to touch on as a part of my presentation. We basically issued two reports this year, which we've done in prior years. One report is the CAFRA, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. One report is the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and the other one is a federal and state compliance report that we issue separately. Within the CAFER, there's an introductory section, which is unaudited, and included there is the Certificate of Excellence in financial reporting from ASW, as Wes pointed out, which I think you should be very proud of. There's a lot of work that goes into that, and their review is very time-consuming, and we get maybe one or two comments a year on that thing, and they're very minimal comments, sort of just to let us know that they're looking at it more than anything, I think. So the district should be commended for that. That's great. Then the next section is the financial section, which includes our audited opinion. Then there's the management, which is a part of the financial statements. It's unaudited by us, but it's basically management's views of the current audit, the financial results of 2010, and looking into the future for the district as well. Then comes the government-wide financial statements, the fund financial statements, and then a reconciliation, the government-wide and the fund financial statements. The government-wide financial statements are presented on an accrual basis of accounting, while the fund financial statements are prepared on a modified accrual basis of accounting. And then, so there's a reconciliation to bridge those two. The biggest reconciling items between the two statements are fixed assets and debt. So in the fund financial statements, when we purchase a fixed asset, it's expensed. When we issue debt, it's revenue in the fund financial statements. On the government-wide, when we purchase a fixed asset, it's capitalized, if it were a for-profit, it's put on as a liability on the government-wide financial statements. So those are the two biggest reconciling items. Then there is the notes to the financial statements and the budget actual for each fund. And then after that, in the CAFER is the statistical section, which is required supplementary information that needs to be required in order for the report to qualify as a CAFER. Within the state, or the other reporting package, there's the federal compliance, and I'll get into that a little bit, and the state compliance. But just to sort of go through this handout, the audit engagement team from our firm was myself as the lead partner. I am responsible, ultimately responsible, for the work that's performed and the review of that work and then the presentation of the financial statements. Rick Rotz is the quality control partner, which means basically our quality control document in our firm requires a second partner to review all financial statements before they leave our questions that may come about that we need guidance on. We go through Rick as well. He performed that for us this year. The engagement team was made of Abby Bass, the in-charge auditor, and Alicia Rent was the staff accountant. So summary of the audit results, what is management's responsibility versus what is our responsibility? Management's responsibility is to prepare the financial statements with your oversight as a part of the internal control structure of the district in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on those financial statements, whether we feel that they are reasonably stated based on the auditing procedures that we perform. We perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and OMB Circular A133. We did issue an unqualified opinion. Sometimes people ask, well, what does that mean? What are my choices? The choices are an adverse opinion, which is the worst, which basically says we can't give an opinion, there's least financial cor- We cannot issue an audit opinion at all. A qualified opinion is there's something in the financial statements that we take exception to. Usually, there is something presented in the financial statement that is not GAAP, and therefore a qualified opinion is warranted. So a clean opinion or an unqualified, we have no reservations as to the- In planning and performing our audit, we do review the internal controls of the district in order to plan and perform what audit procedures we feel that need to, in order to render our opinion, but we do not issue a opinion on the internal controls of the district. During the course of our audit, we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that need to be reported to the board at this time, which is always good news, which means that the internal controls, in our opinion, are working as they should. The summary of audit results related to the federal programs, the district is considered a low-risk auditee, which means we didn't have any findings in our audit of the federal programs in last year. So basically, the requirements under A133, we are required to audit each major program, which is each program that is over $300,000, once every three years, and we are also required to have a 25% coverage. The programs we select have to make up at least 25% of the expenditure made by the district. In performing those criteria, we audited three major programs, and you'll see there's two of them are clusters, the State Fiscal Stabilization Fund Cluster, Title I Cluster, and then the School Improvement Plan. They're clustered this year, excuse me, because of the ARA funds. So the district got Title I funds and Title I ARA, which, that makes that a cluster, so we had to, even though the funding came from two different sources, it's a cluster, we had to audit it as one program. We issued an unqualified opinion related to the compliance on our audit work to the major programs. And again, related to federal programs, we didn't have any material weaknesses or any significant deficiencies that need to be disclosed to the district. Then in the, for the state compliance, we issued another opinion there, which was unqualified, which we are required to examine the district's compliance and regulations, specifically budgeting and disbursement procedures, accurate disclosure of attendance and transportation records. That engagement, or that part of the engagement, is performed under attestation standards established by the AICPA, and as I said before, we did issue an unqualified opinion on that. The next page is other required communications. These are communications that we're required to disclose to you. Since there was, I'm not going to go through each one of these individually, since there was nothing to report, we didn't have anything that we needed to report, so we need to tell you we didn't have anything that we needed to report. But a couple of things I'd like to note in there, that there were no audit adjustments as a result of our audit to the financial statements. And we do obtain a representation letter signed by management dated September 30th, which is the date we take responsibility for these audited financial statements. The district's year-end is June 30th. The financial statements were ready to be released, by, to be released on September 30th, and that's the date of our opinion. We have done procedures through that date, so if there's a subsequent event, a bond issue or something, or a contingency, a liability, we would have to evaluate that and determine if we had to include that in our financial statements before they were issued. So anything after September 30th, we're not taking responsibility for. And then the last thing I would just sort of like to mention is, there was a new GASB issued this year, which is always fun, you know, which is going to basically redefine fund balance classifications in the fund financial statements next year, this year. Fund financial statements is designated or undesignated, that's how the fund balances are presented, and in the government-wide, they're restricted or unrestricted. And so this new GASB is going to sort of bridge those two, and there will be five new fund balance classifications. The district may or may not have all five, depending on what needs to be in each fund balance. There are five categories, you may not have all five. And those categories, new categories are non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. So that will be a process that will have to happen as of basically June 30th, 2011, when we issue those financial statements. So just to make you aware of that, that it's coming down the pike, or it's really here now, because it's effective June 30, 2011. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Well, I did come across one unfamiliar term and a frightening number, and that's in your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and in the preliminary materials, Roman numeral VIII, and it talks about the, under debt administration, that the district's bonded debt capacity of $536,462,025. What does that mean for the district?
Basically, that, what that basically states is, there's state requirements, 15% of your assessed valuation is, and whatever that number is, it's the top number, 667 million. We really only have outstanding debt of 141 million, plus the amount, there's 11 million offsetting, so basically what it's telling you is we still could, if we wanted to, borrow $538 million if we wanted to do something very large. So that's what that tells you.
I was kind of afraid that's what that meant. Hopefully, we're not going-
Of course, there's a subsequent levy increase, of course, if you-
If you want, on page 41, that's sort of computed out for you?
Page 41, you said?
Page 41, and it's a note to the financial statements.
Okay. Now I see where it comes from. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wertz, I just, I comment that maybe you can address a little bit. There was a report that was issued today that the St. Louis housing, that 22% of the homes are underwater. In other words, their value is less than what the people owe on them. And we're a district that lives and dies by property values, so that's kind of an indication that maybe property values will still go down some. Is that something that, I mean, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but as you look at these school districts and that and assess that, is that something that you see that we need to keep our eye on pretty closely over the next year or two?
Absolutely. I'm not sure that the housing market has come back, you know. I think every district that we audit has seen a decrease in total value valuations, and a lot of people are protesting their taxes or not even paying their taxes, so it impacts you, so you certainly need to be aware of that.
And to remind you, even last year, we still had, we usually budget 96% of our property tax revenue, and we came in at around 97%. So we still budget relatively conservative from that aspect of it, and we haven't heard anything different coming out or anything adverse to the payment cycle yet. So I'm still pretty confident that the 96% that we're budgeting currently is, will still hold, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Wertz, and you certainly enjoyed working with your team this summer. Ms. Bass was particularly intrusive, is that thorough?
Tell her you said so. Thank you.
Can I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the 2009-2010 Audit Report as presented at the November 10, in the November 10, 2010 Board Material? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six oh. 11.02, Approval of Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of $34 Million Principal Amount of Taxable General Obligation Bonds. Wes Garten?
Good evening, again. I'm here to seek approval for selling the remaining 34 million, if you remember, November 2008 bond issue. In February of 2009, we went to market with the first portion of that, and we're back, and we've gone to market, matter of fact, this afternoon, or this morning, this afternoon, with the remaining 34 million. There are two reasons why we did that. First of all, there is a product, you just heard Brian talk about, the ARA funds, and out of the ARA legislation in 2009, there was a program called Build America Bonds, and it also has a sunset at the end of this year. And it doesn't, we don't know at this point whether it'll be extended or not, but there is definitely advantages for us to go forward with that, and in the form of about a third of your interest expense being reimbursed from the federal government. So it's a real good deal from that aspect of it. And then, those two main reasons, which are really good reasons, we took it to market and went forward with that. So first of all, I just want to, before I bring questions, I would just want to introduce Robert Bolserud and Jason Cherry, they're both of Gilmore Bell, and they're part of our Bond Council, and also Amelia Bond, who's our bond underwriter with George K. Bond. I want to thank them. They did a lot of hard work for us and gave us a lot of great advice to get us to this point. And with that, I'll open up questions.
What are we going to do with this money right now? Is it going to be invested?
It will be temporarily invested. Of course, rates aren't too advantageous at this point in time, they're relatively low, but we will hold them. We've got a lot of big projects out there. South High's getting ready to start with their science center, and then we'll go on forward at West and North, and there's many of other projects that we're putting to use with that. So, yeah, we will hold it and invest it, and unfortunately, the rates aren't at the best rate to do that, but we'll do our best with that.
Is there, I don't know anything about the holding of the bonds or whatever, but is there any interest gained on any of this when it's set aside?
Oh, yeah. I mean, there'll be interest. I mean, but the rate now, I mean, the rates, we, of course, the federal, or the state government, there's restrictions. We can't go out and take this money and put it into the stock market or anything like that. There's some restrictions on what we can do with that. Probably rates are around 1% right now, or maybe even a little bit less than that. The overnight, like in our operating side, there's overnight sweeps that we use that are at zero to, that shows you the low interest income rates that we are receiving at this time.
And that's folded into the total?
That's not included in that total, no. I mean, as it's, I mean, obviously, as it sits in the fund balance, it will accrue interest and will get a little bit of interest income off of that, off of those funds.
Thank you.
Mr. F. Bond? Ms. Mogermon?
I guess the timing issue here with the opportunity with the Build America Bonds and the reimbursement of some of the interest there, what's, absent that opportunity, when would we have, in the normal course of things, been selling these bonds?
You know, I think we would have probably come back to you anywhere between now and maybe September of next year. I mean, we've, I mean, we had a lot of projects going, and I think through- But there going forward, we would have needed the money anyway to finish out our five-year capital, you know, capital plan that we had with the 87 million.
Okay.
So we're not going too far ahead of it, but we're kind of on the beginning stages of that. But the Build America Bonds really helped look at that, and with the uncertainty of it being extended, I think it was, it's a perfect time for us to do that, even more so than in December, because I think, yeah, a lot of people are going to try to take advantage of the Build America Bonds, a lot of municipalities out there, so there might be a flooding of the market, especially in December, to take some to market, so.
All right. Any other questions? All right. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of $28 million principal amount of taxable general obligation bonds, Build America Bonds, Direct Pay, Series 2010A, and $6 million principal amount of general obligations, B of Parkway C2 School District, St. Louis County, Missouri, prescribing the form and details of the bonds, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds as they become due, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
So moved.
Could you repeat that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six oh.
And, Mr. President, have fun signing that stuff. I did.
I'm feeling the joy. 12.0 reports, we have none this month. 13.0 work sessions, 13.01 preliminary discussions, Transportation Department. Call on Will Rosa, Director of Transportation. And 19... State champion at, 79 champion at, how many pounds?
One.
President Majors, Vice President Jacobs, members of the board, Ms. Kalanda, Dr. Cinty. Good evening, I'm here to talk to you about Transportation Department, tell you what we're doing. First, I have to start with a quiz, of course. They say a picture says a thousand words, and like you look at the next slide and answer those questions, the what, when, where. And there's the picture. See the answers. Parkway drivers making the difference. That's a big part of our mission every day, providing safe and a positive experience on the bus. That's what we do. 99% the perfect day? You know, who wouldn't be happy with? Again, for Parkway, it's not acceptable. You know, I know one parent that wouldn't be happy with picking up 100 kids and dropping just 99 coming back. We're not delivering packages. You know, if you order online and with UPS or another carrier and they damage or lose your package, you just order another one, it's not a big deal. We don't have that luxury. It's a big deal. And that's what we do. A little bit about our fleet and vehicle maintenance department. We're a vehicle maintenance for 267 vehicles in the district, including the buses and the white fleet. Operating behind the scenes is a dedicated group of service technicians that work hard to keep our buses and our white fleet on the road every day. You know, we focus on preventative maintenance more than anything, trying to identify problems before they happen on the road. Our breakdown frequency for our buses is so low, we barely measure it, it's even less than one time per month on our buses, and that's, we drive 1.8 million miles a year, it's pretty darn low. You can appreciate it more if you come from another district like I have, where that's not the case. Then you come here and you find out how solid we really are in that department. Students transported, we transport, we just did a student count, it's 10,800 students transported each day. Our upward is a good thing. I'm not sure why, but I know we encourage students to ride the bus. It's good for, reduces congestion, car traffic in schools. It's the safest form of transportation, we know that, even safer than cars, and it's good for the environment. Hopefully, it'll continue trending that direction. We do receive some funding from the state. It's driven primarily, there's a formula that takes into account the mileage and the number of pupils and the distance, and based on that, there's a calculation, we get some money back from the state. Our organization, MAPT, has a meeting scheduled with the assistant to the governor to discuss some of the funding and making sure it stays in there, because that's always been an issue with declining from the state. And that's coming up this month, and we're going to express our concerns about continuing to keep the funding strong for transportation. Here's a look at our... As you can see, we have a stable, mature workforce, although predominantly female, we are seeing equal number of men joining the ranks in the last few years. We've hired several retiring retirees wanting to continue to stay active, so it's been kind of interesting. Our lower turnover and tenure of staff makes a difference, we believe. The drivers really know their way around schools, streets, and routes, and they know their students. And we think it's pretty cool that you can have the same driver as in elementary school, middle school, and high school. And I don't know how many districts can say that, but we can do it here. They really get to know their kids. Sandy Beard, 41, accident-free years with Parkway. You know, we attract and retain high-quality employees with competitive wages and benefits, friendly work environment, safe and well-maintained equipment. We've been able to keep safe and caring drivers like Sandy for Fort... And we have other employees like Sandy. Our safety culture, it wouldn't be a bus presentation if I didn't talk about safety. We have accidents, we don't have very many. Most of them are minor, you probably don't hear about very many at all. We track every single accident, regardless of the size. We're always looking very closely, trying to understand the causes of the accidents so we can prevent future occurrences. We do all those things. Our drivers are required to take eight hours of training each year, and that includes, we cover the Smith system, which is our safety program, and that's a space cushion driving. And we teach our drivers to have a big space cushion around them so they can react appropriately in a bad situation. We talk about backing, danger zones, loading, unloading, emergency evacuations, winter driving, and student management. We do participate in some workshops through our local organization, and we have consecutive outstanding inspections with the state highway patrol. Our buses are very safe. Key performance measurements, this slide and the next three are examples of some key performance measurements we currently use, and there are a few at the end that we could look at in more greater detail. Again, these are a few of them, accident statistics, we keep very close track, the DESI training requirements, which are the eight hours, we have to have our training every year, all the files have to be maintained, the licenses, the background checks, the fingerprints, the, all of the physical, we have to do a lot of things to make sure our drivers meet the standards. We also have to do a random drug testing, and a lot of people don't know that, but random drug and alcohol, we have to test in a year, the course of a year, 50% of our employees are drivers. And we've had a clear record, at least the past four years, and probably beyond that, another six or 10 with... And we also check for the alcohol portion. In terms of efficiency, we have the ability with our VersaTran routing software to measure all of these things, pupils per bus, the tiering of the routes, the number of bus stops, bus runs, average length of ride. We submit a preliminary route and mile report to the board each fall, which is in route to you soon, and it shows you the routes we have, and then we do it again in the spring to give you an idea of our routes and miles. We work very hard to meet the needs of our community in terms of safety and convenience, but we also try and act very fiscally responsible. We understand that's important to the district, too. In other words, we don't make a stop at every house just because we're driving by it, because that seems to be a big request, a drive-by, can you stop? You're going by, can you stop? We try and do the best we can to explain how that wouldn't work, and we don't do it. Vehicles, our fleet is reliable and safe, as I mentioned already. In the background, we have a group of very dedicated service technicians that keep our buses rolling in, our white fleet for that matter. We measure all of those things, and we're right on track, we're right where we need to be. And then finally, we've not done any surveys, and I'm working with Nathan Tyson to create some, something that could help us understand better the needs of our community and what we're doing, maybe find out some of the things that we do well, and also some of the things that we can improve on. So, we will be doing some surveys here over the next, of course, the next months, and these are some of the ones we've identified so far, and we're going to get some input from our drivers and certainly from the board as well. On time, are we getting to school on time, are we picking up on time, what do the parents think, what's the interaction with our department? Just trying to find some weaknesses, if there are some, and how we can fix them. How do we support the mission and vision of the district? It's more than safety and reliability, the connection we make with students really count. Here are just a few examples of some Parkway drivers and letters or notes or emails I've received from parents. One of them, you know, he smiles a lot, he says fun things when you're getting on the bus, he sings songs, he knows a kid's names and stops, he always drives safely, and that's from some parents. Another one, Dear Will, Sandy exemplifies the responsibility and trustworthiness that all parents hope for in a bus driver. When we send our children off to school, that was an email I received from a parent, and they're talking about Sandy Beard, it's the same Sandy Beard that had been here for 41 years. Sandy really epitomizes what's good about our drivers, and there are many more drivers like Sandy. And then, picture, we have a driver that was participating in a Mason Ridge play, they asked him to, so he's connecting with kids in the school in a way that you might not see in other districts. And we think that's very important, to do that. Toward being world-class, you know, we're one area in the district that you can count on to deliver on-time service reliability every day, and safe, on a safe, friendly environment. We want to do our part to ensure transportation is a non-issue in the district, and so schools and educators focus on what they need to do, which is take care of the kids. So, the final quiz, can anyone tell me the most important, one of the most important things about the door? Yes. It opens, that's very important. Got to think bigger, much bigger. It's the first door, students go through on a great, on their journey to a great Parkway education. And, you know, I'm proud to be part of an organization like Parkway that finds ways to be successful for our kids. I think we do a good job at that. We're always looking for ways to do things better, so. My final slide, if anyone has any questions?
System, so if there's any, you can see that they measure a lot of things already, they're going to add some surveys. So, are there other things that you would like for us to cover? Mrs. Mogan?
Well, first, I need to say that I told Will, he's my hero of the day, because there was a breakthrough, at least for me, at the steering committee meeting today, when we were doing the length of the day and the start and stop time of the school day. Will and I think Mr. Kershawper worked together to put a chart that shows us we can still do the three-tiered bus system and change, scramble around the start times of the day, and add to the length of the day. I have, we have always been told we can't do that without added cost. They showed we can do it without added cost, we can do it with our existing bus fleet, and I think maybe even cut back a little bit.
Be a break-even or even some gains in some areas, depending on how flexible schools can be.
So, that was... So, I think as board members, frequently, we hear about discipline issues on the bus. So, I think that that's something we will want to hear about in the program evaluation, and how, what are we doing to address these discipline issues? We hear occasionally, and I haven't heard this lately, so I don't know if this is even an issue, about overcrowding sometimes, especially at the beginning of a school year, parents may call about that. But I haven't heard anything recently in the last couple of years, maybe others have. And just general safety concerns, do our kids wear seatbelts? I would say probably not, because there's no one there making sure that they buckle up, and so I think those are the three issues I had that should be covered.
Mr. Appelbaum?
Well, you know, you said that it's trending up, the ridership is trending upwards, but in particular, issues on trying to encourage utilizing the buses, but then you run into overcrowding issues, and whether or not that's going to impact any of the cost or anything like that.
Could, we haven't, it hasn't gotten to that point, we still have capacity for our buses, and I can, in a future, following up report, I can break down what our capacities are by level of school, and you can see, get an idea where we're at, it's just a matter of balancing them. But we haven't had a problem, although we have had overcrowding, and when we do have overcrowding, where it's unsafe overcrowding, then we add a bus into the system.
Ms. Castile?
Just as an update, do all the buses at this time have cameras?
They do. Our special needs fleet do not, I think we just have two or three, but all of our regular buses have cameras, and they're very useful for some of the behavioral issues that we have. Schools, and we post them out there, they're very helpful.
Okay, and I just have a comment. When we were at the convention, one of the vendors saw the Parkway name on my name tag, and he said, "Oh, you must know Will Rosa." And I said, "Yes," and he said, and with that, he handed me one of those, not a stress ball, but a bus-shaped rubber. And I thought, "Well, I know he meant that in a nice way, not that you..."
I'll track him down. Next conference, I'll find him.
I've got his card at home, I forgot to bring it.
He's in big trouble.
Anything else? Ms. Feldman?
Well, I'm a client. Send your survey my way, because I will tell everybody that your buses are on time, even the first day of school.
Yep.
They bring the kids home on time. If there's a route change or some kind of problem, I can have a way eligible person from your staff. I don't, there's not enough time in the day for me to tell you how reliable your bus service has been. My kids have had fabulous drivers for years and years and years in elementary school. We had this Lisa, I think I told you that before, your award-winning driver, and my daughters had the same driver in elementary school and all through middle school.
Yep.
To and from, every day, takes very good care of her, and I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you. We try hard to do that.
I do have a couple of questions, now that we're past that, and I'm interested in knowing what the cuts were that were made. And you don't have to give me this now, but for your report, what the cuts the state made, how they're going to impact us financially. And I know that there's been talk about some elementary school activity buses.
Yep.
I'd like to know what the status of that is.
Okay, we'll have that.
I, too, am a client, and...
You guys are good clients out here.
...for the one time that there was a breakdown. But he thought it was, he thought it was pretty cool. But it didn't take long...
That's a rarity.
It didn't take long before another bus was there to pick up those kids and transport them, and they got to school on time that day, so that was good. I would just ask you, when you go through evaluating your department, if you could maybe step outside the box a little bit, look at some of the, maybe even out-of-state districts, just trying to figure out, is there a place where we're falling down or we can do better, or, you know, utilize something different? Your department's done so well, but it's, I think it's still worth asking all the tough questions, what can we do better? You know, who do we really compare ourselves against?
Well, it's who compares themselves to us, is my view. A lot of good things going, but there's always little things we're trying to improve. The second we start saying we're the best is the second we start getting worse. So, we're always trying to improve and look for better ways to do things. The student behavior is one big issue now, we're trying to figure out a way to manage students on the bus, interact with them in a more positive way, and still drive the bus safely, because the drivers are always doing this, and the drivers have accidents. And that's what we're really trying to avoid, rear-end accidents, which are the worst. So, we have some challenges, and we certainly, we look for best practices. In fact, Fred Matlak is here today, he's an avid reader, and he printed off a article from a school district in, what state was that?
Michigan.
Michigan, that was looking for a parent contract with parents, with their students and the behaviors on the bus, and they need to follow the rules on the bus, or they get thrown off, and the parents have to sign it. And I thought, wow, that might, we have a few instances where that might be helpful, and we're going to look, explore that a little bit further, so maybe I got to... That was a good idea.
Okay. Well, I know, I also am a satisfied customer, and my third grader, Madison, is a semi-regular rider, I usually drop her off in the morning. I am contributing to the congestion at Oak Brook, but it's kind of what we do, so I trust you'll indulge us on that. Couple of questions I had was, I know you mentioned the athletic and activity trips, but I believe we still use some contract buses for those?
We do.
So, I guess the...
A lot.
In your review, the... So I guess the, in your review, the, you know, what's the threshold there, the decision point for using contract versus our own buses and then...
And we hope to pilot, so maybe I can tell you something when I come back. We're looking at piloting to do some of those things with our own people, whether it's warehouse, let you know how that goes.
Okay. Well, certainly, the visual inspection of the contract buses versus the Parkway buses.
Right. It's different.
There is a difference.
There's a difference.
So I think that piece, just kind of, you know, deconstruct that one and let us know the whys and wherefores and certainly any updates and future trends would be appreciated. And then, and I think it was one of the initial meetings with Grant Wiggins, I think there was a comment, something to the effect of you know you're there when your, when your bus drivers know where they fit into the mission and vision. And so I guess on that front, I know you've been heavily involved in Project Parkway. I've met your mechanics and some of your drivers. That is a good look.
That is, just clear, that is, I think that is you there in the picture.
Yes, it is.
President Majors.
President Majors was at our bus rodeo. I rarely get to attend a rodeo, so I could wear the hat, the boots and the belt, so. But the, I think the, I've been incredibly impressed with the caliber of your employees, the lunch I had with the mechanics, the dedication and talking with some of them at the school bus rodeo. There are some very talented individuals and I hope they're being encouraged to engage with some of the Project Parkway subcommittees and I know they've got great ideas to add and I'm not the first one to say that if the entire district was operating on the level of Transportation Department, that I think we'd really like to be there, so.
Thank you. Yeah, we do have some employees that are participating. One was on the bullying for drivers, but our drivers, employees are starting to get the mission and vision of how they connect to students because that's their role beside the safety and getting kids. We've got that down. How do they interact with kids? That's a big piece that we're really always trying to work on.
Well, that's certainly your slide about the first door. That's also the first door, well, maybe even, maybe even at the bus stop, but the whole bullying issue, drivers absolutely, I think would be an integral piece to that, so.
So she wants the kids to stop bullying her.
Exactly. We have follow-up, Mrs. Moeven?
Well, we were just thinking, maybe in the report, I know there are alternative fuel buses.
I just got a phone call on alternative fuel bus today from the Cleet Gas.
How about that?
CNG.
Well, maybe we could include.
I can tell you about that. They're expensive.
I know we've always said they're very expensive, but will they save us money? Will they last longer? Blah, blah, blah. So maybe include that.
That's funny. I, for a grant, and trying a CNG, and Fred and I were talking about getting some grant money and at least trying a bus, which we'd be certainly willing to do. So I should know a lot more by the time I talk to you.
Grants are good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Dr. Senti, anything?
No.
Okay. Good job, Cindy. Well done. Thank you very much. Thirteen point oh-two, preliminary discussion, communications arts. Lisa Meredith, coordinator of elementary communication arts, and Dr. Rebecca Langrell, coordinator of secondary communication arts. And the usual suspects.
Everybody. Good evening, President Major, Vice President Jacob, Dr. Senti, Ms. Calanda, Board of Directors. Good evening. We're glad to be here. This is an event that we're going to talk about six years from now, so everybody mark it on your calendar. We are beginning the next cycle for our curriculum review for the Parkway School District. It was five short years ago when we started this process and it's just unbelievable what's happened. So we are very excited to be sitting here before you, beginning the next cycle. The slide that you're looking at, teaching, learning, accountability, we're just throwing it out there for you to consider with our new name. We haven't decided for sure that that's going to be our logo, but a very important piece of that is the tree and the growth and the seeds that we do plant with our curriculum. As I said, our cycle begins tonight, twentyeenth. Some of these slides before, our work is on the house. It is now not Grant Wiggins' house, it's Parkway's house. The foundation has been built and we, again, through the review process, will be looking at curriculum assessment system and our instructional programs and practices. That went the wrong way. Here we go. I know you have seen this. I shared it at the board retreat. This is based on Dr. Wiggins' work about reviewing curriculum. We are now up in the red area for communication arts. We are beginning our curriculum review by taking the curriculum that we have and assessing it against our new mission, vision, learning principles and commitments. It'll be stages and so as curriculum and comm arts moves from red to yellow, you will see all the different strategies and processes we go through this cycle. You have also seen some of the changes that we're going to bring together in addition to the ones on the cycle, but I wanted to highlight a couple of these this evening. First of all, in my memory, as a Parkway employee for a long time now, this is the one time we are getting to our curriculum guide and it really truly will be revision. We are, our stage one, are guaranteed, we certainly will look at that and revise, but our work will be on the second bullet around stage two, are all of our assessments, quality assessments, and then stage three, we'll be looking at best practice. But the good news is the curriculum is on the online curriculum guide and it'll be more revision. We won't be starting from scratch and I think that's an important piece to remember as we move forward. Another big change this year, and thanks to Dr. Tyson's willingness to do this, we always present. It is a district evaluation that we bring to the Board of Education. During this six-year cycle, not only will you get a district review of comm arts curriculum, you will also get individual school reviews. So what is comm arts? What is the state of comm arts at our high schools, each high school, each middle school, each elementary? We think this will be so helpful for our schools as they write their goals and their improvement goals and it'll be another piece of data for them to review. So their survey data will come to each school, students, parents, et cetera. And I think this is a good addition and many thanks to Dr. Tyson for agreeing to do that kind of work. The second piece is, we know, we've been talking quite a bit about formative data. We need formative data not only on students but on our goals. Before, we would review our data every five, six. Now that happens periodically. So if, when we get our survey back on communication arts, if we find a gap that we want to watch, we may survey more often to keep looking at, are the interventions working? Is something changing? We want to keep watching to be sure it's working. That will be new for us. And then, as I said, written, implemented and attained curriculum will be assessed against our mission, vision and learning principles. I know you can't see that, but what I wanted to again point out is the evaluations that have occurred before now, and this is the beginning with comm arts in the fall of this year. So tonight is the first conversation with the board about the communication arts program evaluation. Wanted to point out a couple of things that are really different about comm arts, unlike all the other curriculums. First of all, our last communication arts survey was given in 2000. The board worked with curriculum in 2005. We had our survey done, the evaluation was done in 2001, but the curriculum was not written from that evaluation. Is that making sense? The timeline got delayed. So it is important that we move forward with curriculum arts right now and our focus will be looking at the entire curriculum. In 2006, when Lisa Schwartz came here as the coordinator of comm, communication arts, our goal for 2006 was to get alignment with our grade level expectations. So it was an unusual adoption of curriculum and I wanted to point that out, especially since the survey happened in 2000 and again, the curriculum didn't come forward until 2006. So the people who will be presenting now, I want you to know they'll come back to you in April, April thirteenth, with the elementary. Comm arts evaluation will come forward and the fall, in the fall of 2011, we'll be back with the revised curriculum. You have yet to meet these two people, but I want to introduce to you, if you've come on up, Ms. Lisa Meredith, who is our elementary comm arts coordinator. It's hard for me to believe that she's been here four years and it's her first formal presentation with the Board of Education. So I wanted you to meet Lisa and Dr. Becky Langrell, is our secondary comm arts coordinator. And five years ago, when I went to curriculum, one of the things that we knew is that it was difficult for one person to do pre-K-12 communication arts. And I think this is one of the best decisions that we made. We took three positions and did not fill them so that we could have two comm arts coordinators. So tonight, they are going to present a quick overview of the communication arts curriculum and then ask what questions you would like them to investigate. I think it's Lisa. Leave that right there. There you go.
Good evening. We are excited to be with you and share our preliminary thinking for the comm arts program evaluation and then to receive input from you. We would like to begin by providing a little background about the communication arts work that has been completed during the past four years. If you look at the blue column of this slide, you will notice that in elementary, we have 375 classroom teachers who are responsible for implementing the guaranteed curriculum, which includes reading, writing, listening and speaking and informational technology. In addition, each building has a literacy coach who is responsible for providing job-embedded professional development for teachers. This work includes facilitating collaborative planning, data collection, facilitating collaborative learning through structures such as learning labs, book studies and lesson study. The coaches also support teachers through individual coaching that is often called formal coaching cycles, which is many action research projects. The elementary program also includes an intervention model that is implemented by 45 reading intervention specialists and 11 teaching assistants. The intervention staff is responsible for providing supplemental reading instruction for students who are not performing on grade levels.
At the middle school, we have a current reality of 73 communication arts teachers delivering the guaranteed and viable curriculum. If you look at the last bullet on the green column, you will see that half of them are in years one, two or three. Times the size of the elementary schools, each building still has just one coach. Three of the five coaches started two years ago. In terms of reading intervention, at Central Middle, we have two reading teachers and one reading TA. At Northeast Middle, one reading teacher and one reading TA. At South Middle, one reading teacher and no TA. At Southwest Middle, one reading teacher and one reading TA. And at West Middle, two reading teachers and one TA. So you can see a wide variety of delivery models going on in the intervention program. At the high school, we have 85 classroom teachers who deliver curriculum, English, speech and debate, journalism and yearbook. If you look at the bottom of the red column, you will see that about a third of them are in years one through three. We have no literacy coaches or instructional coaches at the high school beyond the building-based cohort leaders who work with all content area teachers in year one. In terms of court staff, South High has two reading TAs. Fern and North each have one. Central High has no reading TAs and there are no reading specialists in any of the high schools.
Since the curriculum framework was approved in May of 2006, the elementary teachers have diligently been working to design 87 units of study for reading and writing instruction at the elementary schools. Each grade level has about six or seven units of study for reading in addition to six or seven units of study for writing. In addition, the teachers have developed a scope and sequence to guarantee the instruction, assessment and transfer of understanding of the principles and patterns related to spelling. In addition, we have created district common assessments for grades two through five that are given at the end of each of the units of study. We have also included a variety of interventions that allow the instruction to be more accelerated and responsive to the individual needs of students. In addition, we redesigned the summer school reading intervention model and the new format allows for the teacher to provide instruction in smaller groups with students who have similar needs.
Until this year, as you may remember, we had up to six different delivery models for communication arts across the five high, middle schools. New this year, we have the double daily period of CA. Thank you very, very much. Over the past eighteen months, teams of teachers led by literacy coaches and myself have been unitally aligned through the study for the 19-minute walk. Each of the new units of study ends with a district common assessment, data from which our monthly. In terms of reading intervention at the middle school, reading strategies is class offered to students who are reading three or more years of a grade level. Strategies two, taught for students who have two years of a grade level, concentrates on reading comprehension and reading performance. In addition, the district office at high school, the REACH program, students can use a smaller, less complex learning environment. 120 minutes of group reading, reading arts behavior each day. At the high school, last year, teachers chose district over lurching and then by priorities standards, they had a completely different course, they also called common rubric for process and on-site writing. Our unit study is here, the online curriculum guide. Thank you. Our posting model, UBD units for the core English, in each building. In terms of common assessments, the high school, from 2007 to 2009, the freshman literacy project teachers implemented three reading common assessments that were then adopted by several additional freshman teachers at each of the four high schools. Individual schools have been working on building-based common assessments, but at this time, we have just one district common assessment in English and that is the ninth grade district essay. In terms of reading intervention, Central and Fern offer a combined English one, read 180 curriculum that includes computer-based instruction. South and North offer a double daily literacy block for one class of freshmen and it is staffed by comm arts teachers and a reading TA. And West High offers read 180 as an elective. All four of the comprehensive high schools have academic support center TAs in English. Central, North and West, during a study hall or act lab, are expected to show up at the academic support center for extra help. At South, the English TAs push into classes. In addition, the district offers several alternative educational settings for English after freshman year. Fern High and Pace, both of these environments offer smaller, less complex, more personalized learning opportunities for students. The difference is that at Fern, students can stay for the remainder of their high school if they choose, while students at Pace stay for just one semester.
We are now going to share our preliminary plans for the data collection that will help answer our research. answer our research question. To what extent are the communication arts curricula and programs ensuring achievement of the Parkway mission? When we are finished sharing our preliminary plans, we would like to gather your input in or through the evaluation process. As we evaluate the core program at elementary, we will present to you an analysis of our MAP achievement data in comparison to how we are growing as a district, but also how we are performing compared to the state and other regional school districts. This will include disaggregated data by our subgroups, as well as data disaggregated by the content strands and the skill and knowledge level questions. We will also analyze district common assessments, including our end-of-unit assessments and the domineering reading assessment that we use in the elementary schools.
For middle school, in terms of standardized data about our core program, we will analyze regional rankings, cohort, and IBD data for totals and subgroups based on the MAP, and totals and subgroup We will also look at trends in the middle school common assessments and Lexile scores from the SRI. For high school, we will analyze whole group and subgroup data in terms of our regional ranking, cohort, and again, our itemized benchmark descriptor data, which is getting down to the skill level, for the English two and of course, exam, for the plan, and for ACT. In addition, we will also look at the freshman essay and freshman SRI scores.
As part of our evaluation, we will also be surveying different groups of people. At elementary, we will survey the students, teachers, administrators, and family members of current students.
At the middle school, we will survey those same sets of folks, but also add non-content area teachers about their perceptions Teachers about their perceptions of the com arts program, and also their degree of comfort and commitment to content area literacy. At the high school, in addition to the groups surveyed at middle school, we will add graduates to find out their level of satisfaction with their English preparation leaving Parkway.
Earlier in the presentation, Kathy reminded you of this diagram. Our survey questions will be designed to analyze how we are doing compared to our mission. Our survey questions will help us determine gaps that we need to develop a strategic plan to close. So our survey questions will include questions related to how well our curriculum correlates to the mission and vision, survey questions related to teaching practices and how they are aligned to the principles and commitments, questions related to the vertical alignment of our curriculum, questions of our assessments and reporting tools, questions related to the viability of our curriculum, do we have time to teach everything that we have included, and questions related to the quality and quantity of resources available for teachers and students.
As a sub-part of the program evaluation, we will also conduct an evaluation of our literacy coach program. We did engage in a preliminary evaluation of this program last year, but we will get into a more thorough one as part of the program this year.
We will also include an evaluation of the reading intervention programs at all three levels. And to do that at the elementary, we will use the data collection points that are included in the blue column.
We will include the data points in the green column and the red column. We're trying to be expeditious here. We have a lot of sources of information we will be using. All right, so this graphic shows that when we come back in the spring, we will be returning with a current reality of our achievement and survey data. In the fall, which is somewhere around 3 o'clock on that wheel, we will have a five-year strategic plan, I guess, along with our curriculum proposal, to address the needs surfaced by our program evaluation.
Within that five-year plan, we will include data collection that we will do throughout, that we will collect throughout the next five years, and timelines of when we will come before you or present to you many evaluations of how we are doing in achieving the goals that we set forward in the five-year plan. Data collection that we will use in mid-cycle may include things such as, will include achievement data, but then may also include things such as instructional rounds, shadowing of students, surveys, or
We have presented the framework for our communication arts program evaluation. At this point, we would like to entertain your questions about areas of study you would want us to be sure to include.
Mrs. Feldman?
Thank you, ladies. The first thing I'd like to know is about word study. I'd like to know what kind of data that we can, that we can look at to tell our patrons that their kids really are going to learn to spell when they, when they're in Parkway Elementary Schools. It's probably the issue that I've heard about most from parents since I've been on the board, and I don't explain it as well as you all do. So thank you to Paul or whoever wrote that piece, I don't know if you ladies wrote it, but I thought I'd explained it very, very well. And it's something that Helen was saying before, you have to put something out there, time in and time out, over and over and over again, for parents to understand, speak it PTO meetings, put it in letters, emails, news. It just has to be out there because parents are so busy, they sometimes just don't, it doesn't sink in. And I think if they understand really what you're doing, and that they're getting a better depth of knowledge from your program than from memorizing words and trying to regurgitate them on Fridays, I think they'd be happy to know how their kids are coming along in spelling. So that's number one. Number two, when you talk about the reading intervention specialists, is that the same as reading recovery, or is that different? That's for you.
I give a quick answer to that. Reading recovery is one of the interventions that we use within the comprehensive intervention model.
Right, so that's for the first graders or the kindergartners?
Reading recovery is for first grade only.
Okay. And then, I, you probably don't know this, but I have an eighth grader here, and we're loving our double com arts block. And I was telling everybody before that when we came in for open house, I should be looking at you, when we came in for open house, the literacy coach presented on standards-based grading. And I think it's fascinating, my daughter's a bookie, and I'm a gal, and I'm not really sure who's doing it, where they're doing it, if they're just really piloting on her team, her grade, this school, that subject. But I attended a seminar in the Ozarks about it from a school, and they did it from a whole different take. They started out with math and science, and they, and they started out in high school, and they were working their way down, versus, it sounded to me kind of like we were starting middle school and working our way up. So I'm just curious about the whole thing. Oh, and a question I have that I also hear from parents a lot about is the differences between our regular high school com arts classes and our honors com arts classes, and why they're so different. The regular com arts students seem to just come in, do their work, and they're done. And the honors students are killed. And it seems to me that needs of all of our students, if there was something in between for a really good student, but not at that really hard level of honors. Do you hear that?
I think I've heard that before.
Yes.
I think we need to look at the differences, and then the rigor of even the, what we would call regular. And so I think, Nathan, as you start looking at that, I think that might be really good information for us to have from kids and parents.
Did I hear you? Our travels around the district, we've been pretty much well, happening through every school. There seems to be, on the domineering, I didn't quite catch, are you going to look into that as There seemed to be quite a bit of difference between what people thought about that particular instrument?
On our draft of our survey at this time, we do have questions for teachers and administrators related to the domineering. We will also look at how the domineering scores correlate with other assessments that we take to see if it, how we can use the data that it gives us.
It's not really a screener, is it?
No, it's more of a diagnostic tool, to dig deeper into a child's reading processing system, to inform your instruction of what might not be working for that child, so you know where to really focus your instruction.
It might be used in connection with a screener like SRI, right?
Yes, that could be. And there are some districts who do use screeners, and then something like the domineering, a diagnostic tool for children who do not perform well on that screener. So that's one of the things that we want to learn from our staff, is what is their thinking about quality and how we use it from the variety of assessments that we give, including the domineering.
Okay. Then there seem to be some staffing differences between the secondary schools, fairly significant ones, in terms of language charts, and I would be interested in you looking into that, just explaining it maybe.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacob?
I don't know if this is an example of UBD, but have you noticed that when a young eighth grader has a crush on his com arts teacher, he really seems to perform better?
You want us to ask about that? Do you use the law of attraction to enhance achievement?
And I do have to say that Ms. Ryan is, she's a teacher of the year for me every year. I mean, she's really done a fabulous job, and my little guy's could do better, but it's not her fault. She's really taken an interest in, not, I mean, students One of the things I would like you to look at too, is in com arts, is just try to address it as much as you can, and where it's feasible, the achievement gap that we see. We have all these kids, we want them to come out, be curious learners, and be successful. And in some instances, it may not be our fault, but we are failing them if they don't achieve. So if you could look at that and see what interventions can we really do, what more can we do? Maybe we can't do a whole lot more, but we would love to see it if we can.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob.
Mrs. Field?
I just want to say thank you. Very comprehensive program, and everything seems to be rolling along. And I was going to suggest the same thing that Mr. Jacob just did about the achievement gap. I was sitting here looking at statistics as far as and I think that we need to improve that achievement gap.
It seems like a very systematic approach to try to quantify something that's not very quantifiable.
Okay, I've been trying to put my Project Parkway hat on, so some of you might have to help me here, but this seems like a great opportunity. We were talking today about evaluating existing programs, so but I think we need to look at it with the Project Parkway lens, and see how the current programs are achieving our mission and vision. So I don't know if that means you're going to approach it a little bit differently than you might otherwise, but it just seems like we have the perfect opportunity here to tackle a few things at once. And one thing today that came up with the full-day kindergarten discussion, I don't know if it's possible for you to give us empirical evidence on that make a difference, children that are in full day, children that aren't. What we've heard today is that after third grade, it really doesn't. But I don't know with regard, regards to com arts, if, I don't know. That's why I'm throwing it out. It might be a piece you could add to that puzzle. Also, I'd like, I don't know, it might be too early to assess the double com arts period, and see if that's having the effect we want it to, with that, with this being the first And the old question of where are we in this, with a district-wide guaranteed viable curriculum with com arts? Are we there yet? Are we almost there yet? But I think that's something the board members would like to hear about. I know those are very broad things.
I'd assume that there's a
Yes, and I think, Don, what we're looking at really is a lot of that standardized achievement data that we showed. We are really expecting gains there, because, but again, this is the first
First year, exactly.
I have to keep bringing that up.
It's the start.
It is the start, and I think we have got to look at what's there.
Is it the first year here, though?
Not the first year here. So some comparison, absolutely. But the first and the other four middle schools. This is a really good time for me to jump up again, because I think I'm representing a lot of the curricularies behind us. I call this the black box for education in that what we've not been able to do well, and our com arts experts and just quality educators are going to help all of us figure this out. It is your last question. How do you assess implementation? And, and you can't do it from your office, and because how kids come into that guarantee differs from teacher to teacher. The TLA team has started walking, what we're calling student learning walks this year. We have now done three schools where 21 of us literally blitz the school. And we have a protocol that we look at about mission, we look for mission, vision, learning principles, we look for implementation in the curriculum. We are trying to learn how to assess implementation. And com arts will be the first to step out, and we will learn so much from them, and then as the other curriculums come forward. But it's something that everyone struggles with, and we just fill in Parkway, we can figure this out. So how do we quantify implementation?
Everything can be measured, right? I've heard that a few hundred times. That's right, that's all.
I did have one more, but did you want? Last year, well, we were touring some elementary schools, I think it was with Chris and Helen, and we witnessed a school that was underperforming have a team of Kathy's people swoop in, and lo and behold, when that school's results came back, they had made some really large gains. So I'm wondering what we can do to take, take those strategies and bottle them, and enhance that swooping down throughout the district. What, what have we learned from that exercise? How many schools have we done that in, and what have been our gains?
And I think my point leverages off of that, and goes to the issue of, and I think under Project Parkway, and allocation of resources. I think this process should inform, let's not just look at which high school has how many of this each piece, to maximize performance, student achievement.
Equity was a huge topic of discussion today in the steering committee. You're right on point.
But, but if we strictly play the equity game, like distribution, I got two, you got two, or does
That's not equity based on need, based on
Need, okay. That's, that was big to me.
And I think
I'm sorry, y'all weren't there today.
The, that very piece about staffing and staffing allocation, I appreciate that, and that is something that I think we need to start out with com arts, because it is, should be based on student need. And we did discuss that, it was the task force about, now, I forget the name, budget resources, that task force, that we really have to look at allocation against student need. And I think that would be something for this team to really wrap their arms
And then the, I appreciate the, the vertical piece, and, and we all know the, where my question starts with that, and we'll let sleeping dogs lie there. Okay, well, I think the, you know, pre-K, I mean, that's a, to me, we've got to be on the same page. And then, and then the piece that I, I didn't see, and maybe it's assumed, but I think we've, I believe we are trying to be very deliberate about the horizontal integration, but do we, do we have a handle on where we are right now? You know, reinforcing math. You know, reinforcing math, science, character education in the comarts curriculum. And I guess something from the town hall meeting two weeks ago, the- capital, if you will, students that are applying to colleges, colleges look at Facebook pages and that sort of thing. Very deliberate in the use of social media, that's, it's not, the growth is this way, it's not steady state, and it's not going away. And it strikes me that if we're looking toward students who are ready to meet future challenges, they ought to be above and beyond in understanding how to manage their image, if you will, and I think that's the, you, you can inadvertently gut yourself at a very early age. And when, when I was a child, missteps were, if they made the local police- and now they are permanent and ubiquitous. So I think those, those are the kinds of things that, it's absolutely comarts. And I think the ties in with the, I think communications department might have, on the subject of spelling tests, and maybe they've got something to tell us to, and vice versa on, on that whole piece. So I think, kind of broaden the inquiry and, and be, be specific about what we're doing with the horizontal piece on all those fronts. And then I would expect the same when we get into the math and the other curriculum areas, so. Not asking for much. Any follow-ups?
It's, it's- Well, just a question, I guess it's, you know, we have, you- to take a look and just try to ensure that as best we can, that grading, I know we have ways that we can assess things in a general manner across those schools, but grading can be quite different too. So maybe that's something too that you can look at and say, well, we found a way to, to be more equitable in the way, so that the same thing that happens in Northwest Middle.
Just have to tell you, we have to, well, we have to think about how to tackle this. Our assessment communication task force did bring a recommendation today to, I forget the exact language, to robustly investigate that very question about grades, and how are they given, and how is it assessment feedback? Where I'm stumped right now, and I keep looking at Julie, those recommendations were given to our assessment committee. So I think the question is, do we tackle that cross-curricular, or is it just a comarts issue? And I'm, I'm kind of stuck right now, and grading, assessment feedback, how it's looked across, it's not just a comarts.
No.
It's, so we'll write that down and do some thinking, because we just got that today, so I'm not exactly sure how we'll respond, or where in our five-year strategic plan that will come up. It's something we can talk, I'm not sure how we would do that. We could.
Any other follow-ups? Thank you all very much. Outstanding presentation, and nice fielding of questions too. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, and we look forward to seeing you in the spring. Thank you.
All right. I don't have any more questions.
I am shocked to read 14.0, policy review, we have none. That's got to be a first. Let's see, 15.0, call for a special meeting, none. 16.0, call for a closed meeting on November 20, 2010, and I have a motion and a second. The Board of Education call for a closed meeting on Monday, November 22 at 6:00 PM at the Administration Building for the purpose of considering, one, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13, and on Wednesday, December 8, 2010, at 6:30 PM and/or immediately following, the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of actions or litigation involving the district in any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. Three, preparations on behalf of the district or its representatives for negotiating any discussion or work product, 610.021.9. Four, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Calanda.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Castillo?
Yep.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulliman?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. 17.0 recess, 18.0 closed meeting, 19.0. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting, and, sorry, go ahead. Motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. At this time, we will adjourn to closed session.